Good evening, everybody. It's six thirty. So, we are gonna open the meeting. Please know, as usual, the meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. And we'll start with open session, like always. Is anybody here for open session? No? Okay. Laurie, wanna get us kicked off here with this announcement?
Yes, the only announcement that I have actually printed out, and there are quite a few that have come up recently, is the Veterans Freedom Chair Trail Riders Event. It is going to be held at Malone Road Conservation Area on April twenty eighth with a rain date of May fifth, both at ten AM. To get there, it's looks like Mount Jefferson to Malone Road to the conservation area at the end of the road. So, they've been working on the trail for making it accessible to veterans with a chair to go down there. But, like I said, there are quite a few events have come up coming this weekend. The seniors have a plant sale, so any events are always posted. We try to post them as quickly as possible on the town website. So, if you wanna look and see if something's coming up, check there.
Okay, that's great.
I'm gonna do my best to attend this event, the Veterans Freedom Chair. So, this chair was specially designed to get over rugged terrain, and the trail itself was designed to accommodate this chair. So, it's a accessible program based off research that indicates veterans who are wheelchair-bound would benefit from open air, et cetera, things that we know. So, this is just an initiative to call attention to the fact that Hubbardson is home to one of these trails, one of many in the area. It's definitely worth checking out if people have time.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. So, item three, which is the public meeting, which is the next step in our process for the layout of Street or Road. So, how do you wanna frame this?
So, this, as you said, is the next step. So, in order for this to properly go to town meeting, the Board of Selectmen must vote to accept or not the plan presented by the Street or Road residents as it is before you. It was put on file at the town clerk's office and made available, and butters were notified per law. We did speak with council, and we believe we're in compliance with what needs to be done here. So, this would be a discussion amongst the board to vote whether or not to accept this layout. A vote to accept the layout would then make a town meeting vote for this to become a public way valid.
Okay, and you guys can verify that this is the most recent version?
Yeah, the top sheet was stamped by Joyce Green, our town clerk.
So, it goes in order one, two, and three, and then the third one, if you look at it, the last one is invalid, but we wanted to keep everything intact. That should be the old one.
Yep.
He's better reference.
Yep.
I'm sure it is. I just wanna make sure.
I wanna make sure, too. Yes, it's right.
Okay.
I wanna see the planner as well.
Okay. Alright, so we're at the discussion phase. We've been sort of presented with what repercussions there could be, right, for the future? And you wanna, you know, you sent us an email with some information. Can you go over a little bit regarding the, how you can't tie money to the warrant article?
Yes, so one of the questions that was asked for us to look into was, how is this gonna be paid for? There are some costs remaining to include legal fees in terms of accepting this road. So, after town meeting vote, we need to go through a process to make sure it's properly recorded, et cetera, and any land takings that need to happen, if they need to happen, would also be need to be paid for. So, a question I was asked is, how is that gonna be paid for? What mechanism is gonna be used? And could you tie money to, say, a vote? So, that would look like a warrant article that said, we would be, the select board, when we say we, the select board would approve this contingent on knowing the source of remaining funds. So, council said that that's not something you can do. That's not appropriate. So, if you were to accept the layout, then the cost would be incurred by the town.
And how would include the land takings if, also?
Correct. That is council's opinion.
To that point, I have a question, since you were explaining that, I'd like to ask, if I could, of the group. In the warrant article twenty-nine, which is your citizen's warrant that you put in, which appears to be regardless of what we do as a board, you went on with this to still present it to the town. I had a question because at the very end of the article, I'm quoting, "Further transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses here, hereof, et cetera." What was your intent here as to who would defray the expenses?
As to who? May I answer?
Yes, please.
I'm the attorney that's been hired by the group. My name is Deborah Phillips. I am also a town council, and I agree with what you're, I was not aware that you had asked that question, but I agree with town council's opinion. You can't tie a fund outside of town funds to an article like this. Those would be town funds. That's the only way that money can be appropriated for these purposes. It's a public purpose. So, it would be to insert a sum of money from an available fund, presumably something like free cash or whatever. I'm not familiar with the current state of your budget process, but I do believe that there's considerable free cash certified that has not been tapped for your annual meeting as of yet. So, that was the thinking. As far as the costs of preparing the documents that every owner would be asked to sign, they, as far as my intent with the group, and we, I believe we have almost every property owner on the street. There are one or two that are a little difficult to get ahold of their corporations. But, the intent of the vast majority of people is to sign waivers of appraisals and damages in the event that something unforeseen happens and there would need to be a taking. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read the pamphlet that KP Law has put out in the public realm, and I believe specifically distributed to Ryan quite a while ago. It's a very good outline of the process and the procedure and what has to happen. And it's always a good idea to have the ability to use eminent domain and to have some money attached to it for something unforeseen, such as a mortgage that you can't track down and get a subordination on, if that's even a requirement. I have not gotten into the weeds of the details with your town council because we don't even know if this is going to pass this board, and if it does, if it will pass town meeting. So, it seemed premature, but I am confident that the lion's share of the costs will be borne by, for the process and for doing the documents and the recording fee and all of that. And that, and you're not talking big money for that, anyway. It will be borne by the owners who are making this request. They cannot pay you to exercise your eminent domain rights. That is unlawful. It's also unethical. And I'm sure that that's why your town council said you can't attach money to this article that would be from a source other than town funds.
Well, to follow up with that, then, to the group, would, is it conceivable that you folks would be willing to pay some of the expenses as opposed to the, those that are gonna just be thrown at the town?
What expenses are you referring to?
Who knows at this particular point in time? We know there are some issues in terms of the road, culverts, widening the road, narrowing it in places, issues in terms of one household who are, have been, you know, holding up the process for a while and most recently have sent us a letter basically saying, should we go on with this? We're looking at court action on their part.
In the meantime, is it asking too much to have a grader go up and down the road, spring and fall? I mean, we all do pay taxes.
I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about what this, what this has become is an incredible.
That's what it's become.
So, I'm just concerned, and that's why I had questions about this, and then so I'm just throwing that out.
I would like to.
Just a quick point, Deb, just so we're not all talking, can you please, you know, raise your hand and be recognized by the chair? And then I'll give everybody their time, but just, just to keep things going in an orderly fashion, okay? Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to address a couple of the things that you brought up, which widening the road, the culvert, narrowing the road, or a couple of the things that you said. I'm not really sure where those.
No, I didn't mean narrow. I noticed that the area around the pond is staying as it is, at least on the, pick the, one of the tracks that I was looking at. But the rest of it is being widened. Based on what I saw on that.
No, there's no.
It's not being widened?
It's just, it just shows the easement.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, I think that might be just a misunderstanding. That's the layout. That means the town would have a right to that much. Say it's whatever, I don't have the plaintiff's front, let's say it's thirty feet. The traveled portion might be eighteen feet. So, you could go out there and park a vehicle within that shoulder without needing permission from the property owner, things like that, things that you do now on public ways. And with respect to one person who may, and I have not seen the letter, may or may not be threatening quote-unquote "legal action", I will just tell you, in my thirty years of experience as a town council and doing municipal law, and I'm, I don't believe from the sounds of your question, you've had the opportunity to speak to your town council specifically about this. But in my experience, a project like this, there isn't a judge sitting in the Commonwealth that is going to issue an injunction to stop this from going forward if you vote for it and the town votes for it. The only question would be what might be the so-called damages, which would be a check that that person might be seeking from the town for what they would perceive as an infringement on their real property rights.
Which is what they have mentioned, the damage that's been done, et cetera.
Yes, and my personal opinion and my professional opinion is that it would only enhance the value of their property. And that's how that type of analysis is done. It's not the value of the two feet or the ten feet that may be taken away. It's what does that do to the lot that remains? Is that lot devalued? And my best opinion is that appraisers would find the answer to that question to be no. And I could certainly be wrong, and eminent domain cases can go on for a long time. But a case like this, you're not taking twenty acres from somebody to sell to a developer for a shopping mall. So, you're not talking about your federal case or your multimillion dollar lawsuit. And I just, I think in the long run, it really will not, would not be large dollars. And it would not stop the town's vote if it was in the affirmative from going forward. It wouldn't stop us from processing all the rest of the paperwork with your town council.
Go ahead.
To the selectmen's question about potential cost to the town and the taking that the attorney just possibly referred to, the land, if the town were to take the land at the end of Street or Road by eminent domain, be aware that that land is already a private way. It's already burdened by an easement to come and go and pass, which is essentially what it will be after the fact. So, it's pretty clear to me, and I hope to a judge if it gets that far, that the person challenging this would lose no value. It would just change the nature of the easement from one that was reserved initially when she acquired her property to one that the town is now gonna accept and take responsibility for maintenance. It's, there's already an easement there, and an easement will continue to be there if this takes place. So, there'll be no change in use to infringe upon her use of her own land. It's already burdened.
So, you've all seen how, you've all seen how supportive we've been throughout this process. All of these questions need to be asked because our sole purpose is to protect the town. So, it's as simple as that, to support the town and protect the town. So, I guess part of, you know, what we're talking about here is that potential for it to go into the weeds and it to get into a long sort of legal, that's where the cost would be incurred from our standpoint, is that just over time. We had, I'm just gonna give you a quick example. We had an issue a few years ago with, not just the tucks, that was one, too, but we had an issue behind, some property dispute about behind the church up on the common. And that ended up costing us, you know, a lot of money, and it took three or four years to resolve. So, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're not stepping into a situation like that because I wasn't part of the beginning, we didn't know we were stepping into that on that other process. So, all of these questions, even if they're repetitive, are gonna be continued to ask. Do we have, I know, you know, council has sort of chimed in with what I just said there. What, if it goes into, and I don't, if you don't know this answer, feel free as well. If it goes into a sort of legal dispute, do you know, like, how complicated the dispute is? And the root of my question is, how much time from a lawyer's standpoint would have to be spent back and forth?
So, no, but council, so what we asked of council is to guide this process, really. So, we were just asking various questions to make sure this process was done correctly in order to protect the process on the applicant's side and the town's side. What was said in terms of money is more of a range, that there could be nothing found because there's no validity to, or no eminent domain taking at all, to a challenge over which, which plan is acceptable and/or if the land is there and is incontestable. So, it could take some time in order to go through that, some legal time, or none. It's just, its fact is unknown that, that council was advising on. So, in most of these situations, as this council said, the Deb, one of the Debs, it might not be an issue, but it could be. So, that's what I'm trying to give you the advice on.
Go ahead.
I, I, again, I think there's, you know, perhaps a little disconnect about the process. Eminent domain is, and I know that Ryan has read the material that town council put out. I'm not sure that everybody else has had the opportunity to do that. It's a very highly regulated process, as you've come to learn and as we know. And the steps are being followed along the way. The process to make a claim after the fact is also highly regulated. And there's a, there's a timeline, there's a process, and there's a way to do it, and it is also set forth in the law. So, it's, it's not complicated. It's a question of the value that is being sought and really frankly, how, how far somebody wants to take it, facing what I believe strongly would be a losing position because, as Peter said, this property is already incredibly and highly burdened. None of the property owners right now can stop any of the, any of their fellows from traveling on it. They all have the right to travel on it. They all have the right to have a delivery truck come to their house, et cetera, et cetera. The nature of that will not be different from what it is now. So, the detriment to the value of the lot, common sense would tell you should be zero. Can you go out and pay an appraiser to say it's worth something? Of course you can. Can you go out and find a lawyer to argue with the town for some period of time? Sure you can. So, there's no way that you could predict how long and how, how many interactions back and forth this would go. There would be a complaint. There would be an answer. There would be a need for proof on the part of the plaintiff. The burden is on that person. They would have to hire experts, and the burden is on them initially. So, that's where the bulk of cost would be, to start off with, would be on the person making the claim against the town.
In terms of, fees, recording fees, et cetera, they're nominal. It's about, I would say, a hundred dollars per, to record. So, the fees are in the range.
We're gonna pay for that. We're gonna, to record all the, the easement deed? I guess that's another thing. This is an easement, which I, again, I'm assuming, but I'm ninety-nine point nine sure correct, that your town council would want you to be accepting easement deeds and not fee deals. So, because it's in the best interest of the town to do that. That's what I would be advising you if you were my client. And it's the best practice that's outlined in their manual. So, yes, so that would be, my understanding from the beginning was that the residents who were, who were giving that were going to be paying for that. So, I mean, recording fees are, are not on the table for the town as far as I would care.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just, I guess, gonna expand on, on what you said and actually ask, did town council address with you any issues about how the eminent domain definition means? Because I've, I'm not an expert at all, but a lot of people think eminent domain automatically means they're taking my land, you have to pay me. But is it possible that taking an easement by eminent domain would be even an easier course or an easier way to look at it? Because that means that person didn't give up the ownership they gave in easement. So, that should even be more zero because they didn't lose any property. And I'm just wondering if they spoke with you about that in that way.
No, we haven't gotten that, I'm sorry, through, through the chair, we haven't gotten that far into this. Just talking process to this point, again, protecting the process.
No, it's just, it's coming up now, so I'm just wondering if that was also discussed with town council.
Okay.
Danny? Dan, so all, a lot of the stuff would have already been done if our, the bylaws weren't bypassed by the planning board. You know, the developers usually take care of all of this, and the town doesn't have to deal with it. But obviously, it was waived, so we have to deal with all this. And some of the costs, additional costs other than legal, is immediately the culvert. I think we've had a failure with, or they have had a failure because the Bagleys had pictures of where it had flooded their property. And I took a ride down there, and the pipe is all rusted and crushed. And so, I would think that would be something that the town, if it was accepted, would have to immediately replace that pipe. And there's a, something on the end of the pipe that you would testify that you guys, like the three of you, have to clean it all the time to keep it from clogging up. So, the town would bear that burden of someone constantly having to clean it. No?
Actually, Ben, do you wanna speak? You had your hand up before.
Can I finish? Can I finish?
Yeah, of course.
So, the town would have to, or someone would have to, because we have all the culverts in town that we have to clean constantly. Otherwise, they flood and cause damage. The, and then Mr. Nason testified that he was concerned about emergency vehicles getting in there because the road gets muddy in the spring. So, that tells me, I think it would need gravel, so the town would also have to add some gravel to it to bring it up to snuff. And the plowing, it goes out to bid for five thousand a year, I believe, to a landscaper. And the chapter ninety money would just be, wouldn't cover that. I know this talks about, it's three, what's that?
It's not five thousand.
Yeah, it is. It goes out to bid to, it's subcontracted. And the chapter ninety money would be like three thousand, thirty-two hundred, I think you calculated. So, it wouldn't even cover the plowing, but there is some additional expenses that the town would have to pick up other than legal. The culvert replacement, gravel, and the grading, which is not huge money, but we have to let people know that those things are gonna have to be done.
Go ahead.
You're really not talking like, you don't, you're way off base. Number one, the culvert was replaced back in two thousand and six.
I've got a picture of it. It's all rotted and.
That's one end.
Yeah, one end.
And number two, that's Lovelaw Pond property, as well as the intake.
Plans right there.
I know what the plan says. The intake, Lovelaw Pond maintains. I'm one of the persons who maintains it on a weekly basis at least. And the part that you're talking about has not slowed down the flow at all.
What, what hasn't?
And the plowing of the road, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, and the town is paying for that already.
The, but the culvert, definitely, it's completely rotted and smooshed down on the outlet.
Short section of it, and it's not, not affecting the flow at all.
But Mrs. Bagley had pictures of her property all eroded.
And there's been no evidence that it's caused, the pond, the swamp is causing the water. The pond does not back up onto her property.
But the end of the pipe was clogged with a, a steel plate with holes in it?
No. It's offensive, it's a beaver deterrent.
Yeah, there's one on my road, but it's not like that one, and that one is like, it backs up.
Top parts of the town, there's different types of beaver deterrent. It's what works. It's what keeps the culvert clear. At times, it gets clogged up, just like the one at Grimesville gets clogged up, but it gets, it gets cleaned on a regular basis.
By the town?
No, we do.
Oh, so would you continue to clean it? The town wouldn't?
Yes. Told you, it's on that stone, that, the beaver deterrent is in the small pond, that Lovelaw Pond.
So, it's outside of the easement?
Yes.
Mr. Town, Street or Road is thirty-eight hundred to plow.
Okay, just take your eight hundred to plow.
This is it?
Yeah, guys.
Just wanted to augment what Chuck Reed just said about the culvert. The culvert is approximately, help me, Steve, if I'm wrong, eighteen feet long, the pipe that we replaced. And, and, but the, the actual span is approximately twenty-two feet. So, the pipe of eighteen feet was replaced. It is not rotted. It is rock solid. I looked at it yesterday at water level, and there is about a four-feet section on the pond or the outflow of that pipe that was, that was not replaced. And, and to your point, is rotted or damaged. However, it's not impeding the flow of water in any way. It's not under the road. It's off to the side, under the berm, and it's not, it's not impeding the flow. What's, what's flooding Mrs. Beagley's property is a retention dam upstream from this culvert by a hundred yards. It's got nothing to do with the culvert. The culvert is not a problem. Otherwise, Street or Road would have overflowed multiple times by now. Street or Road has never overflowed in the, in the eighteen years that we've owned property there, and other people might attest to a longer term. It has never overflowed.
Yeah, is that because of the Bagley property is lower than?
No, the Bagley property is higher, okay?
She had pictures that it was flooded out, and this was just pictures that they called the.
I would urge the selectmen to talk to the Conservation Commission, unless there's a representative here who we've, you know, dealt with this matter multiple times. With elevation measurements, there's a retention dam. And sure, I'm sure some of her land is lower, okay? It's a swamp, and it's a swamp. It's always been a swamp. There's a retention dam that was erected before anyone in this room was even thought about being born, okay? That goes back over a hundred years, and that retention dam retains Lovelaw Pond from spilling into her property. That, that retention dam has been cut and deepened in order to drain a lower property into the swamp, into Lovelaw Pond.
Not by us.
Not by us, not by us, by someone else who had a purpose of draining their property, okay? When you buy a swamp and you wanna drain it, you have to make water go downhill. The only way to do that is to cut into a, into a dam that was pre-existent for decades and nearly a century. This has been discussed at Adewah, in the Conservation Commission, at the DEP, and, and in many other forums. And, and is there anyone here from the Conservation Commission? Their records are, are public, okay? Our retention dam, and I don't mean the main dam of Lovelaw Pond. We have a secondary dike. I call it a retention dam because that's what it is to prevent Lovelaw Pond some spilling in her direction. She seeks to drain it into Lovelaw Pond. The only way that can happen is by digging a ditch into our dam, into our retention dam, at an elevation that will drain.
Okay, just from.
But to your point about the culvert, the culvert is flowing freely. There is no issue with the culvert.
Well, just on the end of it is rotted, the last four feet, then that's what I saw.
Which is not, which is not impeding the flow. Otherwise, as I said, if it were impeding the flow, Street or Road would overwash, and it's not even within.
I thought it was just backing up, taking the path of least resistance, which would be the Bagley property, which seemed like it was lower.
You can see right now, water's flowing down into the small pond, and it's going towards the pond.
Deb Reed presented pictures, I believe, at the last selectmen's meeting, while I have the floor, showing the flow of water while there was still ice on the pond, while the pond was drawn down. And, and, and at the entrance into Lovelaw Pond from the culvert, the ice was, was not there. It was open, open water, demonstrating the flow of water through that culvert.
Yeah, it was, it was low when I went by. It was completely dried, basically, the culvert.
Sure, but the upstream side of that culvert was not low. The downstream side was slow. It was flowing, and it was flowing fully.
Yeah.
Deb, and then in the back? Go Deb, Deb first, okay.
I have been working for Sharon Bagley as Treehouse Environmental, and I've been working with Department of Environmental Protection. He's correct, and he says that the culvert under Street or Road isn't the cause of flooding because it is lower than their. He's correct, and he says that the culvert under Street or Road isn't the cause of flooding because it is lower than their property. It's that dike further up that is causing water uh, to be diverted off onto the Bagley property. I did some research going back into the seventies and sixties as far as the stream channel. And that stream has always flowed, at least in the last forty years, into Lovell Pond in that path through that dike. I did a Army Corps of Engineers uh, calculations called stream stats. And it also shows the footprint of that stream as the channel is passing that point. So uh, it's, that's where the blockage is, up at that dike. And when the water builds up in the swamp behind that dike, it then overflows onto the Bagley property.
Deb?
It doesn't, it's flowing down.
I, I read your research that you provided. I will be bringing to you, if I'd known it was gonna be an issue tonight, I would have brought it tonight. There is a map that shows that there is also a stream that flows directly into the Bagley property, which is why their driveway washed out. Because it rained in January when the ground was frozen. I, the, the stream bed also flowed, flowed right to their backyard. So I will bring you a map that shows you that.
You provided that map. And there's two, yeah, the other stream flows in the opposite direction. Not towards their property, but from their property.
Right towards their property. I will bring a map.
Go ahead.
To the selectman's question, the culvert, which is at the road that we're talking about becoming a public way of, in one shape or form. Uh, the culvert is not in question, even the consultant of Mrs. Beagley has just said publicly that the culvert is not an issue. That hopefully can move the selectman to favorably support this motion or this layout. The culvert is not the issue. Whether we, there's no one in the room that thinks the culvert is the issue, including Mrs. Beagley's consultant.
Good, Vin, you want?
I just don't wanna, in the middle of this one, but I changed, go back a minute to the question about easements that we had.
Yeah, I know, we'll bounce around, but.
All right, well, in, I think it was two thousand and three or two thousand and four. Uh, we had an issue very similar to this on Dogwood Road North and South. And we've certainly been there. Um, personally, I think those two roads are probably the two worst in the town. And at the time, everybody wanted it to be made public, another situation similar to this. And we had one landowner who refused to sign all the easements. Um, interestingly enough, the gentleman was also the developer of the road and he did not want, for whatever reason, sign over his interest. It ended up with a um, consultation with, at the time, Joel Bard, who was with Coltman and Page before he retired. We, we had to go through a little hoop here and there, but he estimated it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars illegal. Legal. And at the time, we went through with it all, and he came in at fifteen thousand dollars. So we, we talked, because he was way off on that. And we, we reached a settlement with, with Kent, Coltman and Page that was agreeable. But we still didn't have the signature from the landlord until maybe two years later. And of course, I, you probably get a sense of how upset the people on Dogwood Road North and South were when they were unable to get their roads accepted because they, they were even in a worse situation. You know, they, they were told that it was a public way when they bought their land and their houses. Turns out it was all private and the developer was gonna suffer consequences. Now, in this case, the developer is long gone, I mean, this, this road was developed seventy-five, a hundred years ago. So there, there's no way a developer could have, we can go back on that developer. But ultimately, the gentleman, under an assumed name, decided he would like to have a couple other lots perked and sold. And of course, we found out that it was him that wanted to have these lots perked and we refused to, to give him an A and R. We refused to give him the perk test, the whole town just said, hey, you know, here's what we want. And until we get it, you're not getting any lots available. And on top of that, he also paid us fifteen thousand dollars in restitution for all the nonsense he put the town through. So it worked out in the end, we now have two public roads, even though those roads are gonna be, you know, in need of repair.
Separate meeting, separate meeting.
Separate meeting, I, I understand. Uh, but I, I guess my point to all of this is that, that these roads initiatives are only gonna benefit everybody in the town. Sooner or later, things like having that development on Dogwood, it's never gonna happen again. And it's not gonna happen because we have in place now certain uh, prerequisites for anybody to build a road. And when we have a situation like Street or Road, where, where citizens have taken the initiative and only wanna improve the infrastructure and improve the, the values of town, I just think it's, it's something that's prudent for the town to embrace and to move forward on.
Okay, um, yeah, Deb?
I just, I just wanna show the map, the map that I was ranting about. So it's, it's a little small, but you can see that this is forty-one Grimes Road, this is the house, this is the stream bed. This little line right here is the stream bed that comes out of the swamp.
Okay. Still, there is an outlet that feeds behind.
That's going right behind her house.
So that's where the water's coming from?
That's where the water's coming from.
So I was just concerned about litigation for the town, if it was the culvert, which I'm glad to clear that up.
Does that, did we answer all of your questions?
No, I had one other question, Dan.
We're on this topic, you mind if I let these guys, go ahead, whichever order.
In terms of the cost of the plowing, it was my understanding that the reason the town has to bid this out is because it's not a town road. So the thirty-eight hundred dollars, you'll, you'll actually save money if it's just the guy in the town truck who's already out doing all the west, Westminster Road and takes the extra five minutes to go down our road and hit Grimes Road. I mean, it's, it actually saved you money by not having to bid that out to somebody, was my understanding anyways.
I, I just wanted to add to um, what Deb said about the stream outlet, which I believe right now it's supposed to go over where her, her driveway is, and it is impeded because of the driveway w- when they bid it. Um, but if you had gone up to Street or Road in the last few days with all the ice melt and the rain, there is a little bit of a breach in there, the beavers kind of put some stuff in there. You can actually see water flowing out of the Beagley swamp into the small pond. It's not going backwards. What happens if it gets cleaned out again, which happens on multiple occasions when nobody sees and does it, is that causes an equilibrium. So suddenly, the swamp isn't draining anymore. Because by them cleaning it out, it causes some of the water maybe from Lovell Pond to equilibrate with the swamp. And now you have no flow. So right now, it's flowing, you can see a small little waterfall from Street or Road. So water is coming out of that swamp into Lovell Pond. And it's probably also making an attempt to go down the natural stream bed that she just showed you a map of. But it may be impeded at some point there because the driveway is in the way, built up higher.
Okay, go ahead, Deb.
Do you have one more?
Yes, on, uh, I see some large undeveloped parcels on Street or Road, I think it's lot forty-four here. That, so there's a potential for like fifty-five and over communities are popular in Hubbardston. So maybe someone could down the road, because if this goes, this is forever, not just for everyone in the room, it's for the next generation. Um, say there's a fifty-five and over community comes in and they put all their buildings in there and then they pay, they have to follow all the subdivision rules and they pave their road, they're gonna get to Street or Road. And it'll be a dirt, a narrow dirt road. And then, but maybe this will be when we're all gone and then the town will pay to pave the road at that point.
Or maybe you'll ask the developer to do it for you.
To pave Street or Road, yeah. But, so that is, that is a potential. What's that?
The only one entrance?
Yeah, well, it's like the town, the town, it's backed up to Westminster a lot.
I don't think that's your lot.
Well, they could buy a, um, say they bought the house next door, tear it down, and they have their width to get in, you know?
But it's no different than a Halfrey Road, you have, like, Nestlewood and Amberlane, that are newer developments that are paved cul-de-sacs that come out to a dirt road.
True.
Deb?
Is that land potentially buildable as far as, you know, it's a swamp?
Let's go in order here, guys.
It's fairly dry.
Let's go in order here. Did you wanna say something else, Deb? You had your hand up, you didn't, okay. Um, okay, well, you know, what I've been thinking about this as well is what you just said there, uh, about uh, that um, whether or not the town would, would choose to, you know, eventually pave Street or Road. And, you know, Vin had, had brought it up before and I sort of said next meeting and, um, separate meeting, whatever I said. And recently, we've had these discussions and I, there might be some more tonight, about five-year plan for actually paving roads uh, in town. And, you know, last time I checked, Street or Road residents paid their taxes just like everybody else. So that they would find their way onto that list potentially, eventually as well. Cause if it is approved as a public way, um, you know, the DPW director along with town administrator and everybody else in coming up with, you know, whether that's however many years from now, I don't know, but I think that that's, that's maybe something the town would even do in the future.
And that, but then there's the residents of Halfrey Road that said their road is supposed to be paved ten years ago and it hasn't been done.
Sure.
You know, it's good, uh, because we got that letter that she said that all the roads, the selectmen at that time told her all the dirt roads in town were gonna be paved and they never got done.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Michelle Amati, number twenty-nine, I don't think we're under any illusion that, or any wish that would happen anyway. And we would have to get in line just like everyone else, and at the time, if there was funds, we may or may not be answered. But I know, we, we never wanted it paved, we're just, we're just looking for a lawful way to have it maintained the way it was before the town cut us off.
Yeah, I, 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 I got you, so, all right, so, yeah, go ahead.
So one, the other thing that I did wanna say is, um, one of the things that Richard brought up is, is about the cost and, and feeling that, um, it was gonna cost the town just to maintain the road. Um, and so, so I did do a little bit of math about that. Um, the residents of the road pay about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in taxes. The proposed DPW budget for next year is going to be ten percent of our taxes. That's eleven thousand dollars just in real estate taxes that we pay collectively. If we have another three thousand in chapter ninety funds, that's fourteen thousand dollars. Well, it isn't gonna cost you fourteen thousand dollars to plow our road, bring in a little gravel, and grade it twice a year.
We know that, this has nothing to do with that, and I, I.
But he brought up the cost, so I just wanted to address that.
Yeah. I think, okay, I appreciate that, but I think overall, and again, I'm not pretending like this is our money or whatever else, but really not concerned over a couple thousand. This is a, more of a wider ranging concern that we're making a decision that we shouldn't necessarily make because of some future thing we can't predict. So that's why we're trying to flush out all this discussion about, you know, the fervor of the opponent and what, that's really what it is. That's gonna determine, and we haven't, we've seen some fervor so far, right? So, uh, you know, who knows, once it starts getting expensive, whether or not that continues on? We can't know that, right? It would be, it would, it would, it doesn't feel like it should happen, but again, that's what we're talking about.
So does that mean twenty-five households should be held hostage over one person threatening litigation? Like, should we all, like, say we're gonna litigate and then maybe we'll get a little more action?
I know, that's what we're trying to decide.
Yeah.
No, we shouldn't.
Yeah, okay, again, hey, let's keep it in order, keep it in order, please. Um, okay.
Maybe we should all file for a tax abatement, because then that way there, like, we could really save ourselves thousands of what we have to put into our road every year on top of all the taxes that we have to pay.
Well, that would be all private roads too in town, like Printers Brook is all paved and they plow it themselves and they were on the same list as Street or Road. And that's a beautiful uh, neighborhood, they ma- the residents paved it and they maintain it and it's beautiful.
Which road is this?
Street, um, Printers Brook.
Printers Brook just is a point of water. Printers Brook was also an, an issue several years ago. However, that is not a road, that is a common driveway that was allowed even though zoning bylaws did not allow it. Whatever building inspector at that time was in charge allowed those homes to be built. Their frontage, legal frontage is on Lombard Road, and that's a private driveway, that's why they maintain it. As much as they tried to get the town to fix it.
The, the town did plow it for a while, though.
Plow it, it shouldn't have been.
They did.
The town also found another road that's a dead end private road and they're on the DPW budget.
And then they, when they went through these roads, they knocked it off.
There's seven houses on there, but they're being plowed anyway. Like, and, and our road is not a dead end, just as a reminder. Our road connects two public roads and is traveled really by the public, not just open to the public, but it's traveled by the public.
Okay, so we are here tonight as a board to dec- decide whether or not we're gonna be voting on whether or not we accept the layout of Street or Road as presented, is that correct?
Accepting this layout as presented to bring to town meeting.
To bring to town meeting, okay, so that's where we're at. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion on this, we've all had time to think about it, uh, and all that. I know you missed a little bit of it, but you know this issue, just as much as, uh, anyone. Um, so, so I guess we should, unless somebody feels like we shouldn't do some, do some business here, we should, we should talk about.
I'd move to, uh, move the question then. What's that? To end the discussion, so we can.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the layout of Street or Road as presented at the public hearing tonight.
So the way this is gonna go is if there's a second, that, the second, and then we'll get into discussion again in case anybody wants to say something, but just let this see if there's a second first.
Second emotion.
Okay, second, and we're in discussion?
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead, yeah, that's what we're in.
How does the fact that someone's not here affect this?
Not at all.
Okay.
As long as we have a quorum, which is a majority, so there's five of us, as long as there are three here and there can be a majority vote or would be, doesn't necessarily have to be, cause somebody could abstain or whatever else, um, that doesn't affect anything.
Okay.
Uh, okay, any further discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Animus? Okay.
So now you gotta convince town meeting.
Not the board is deciding, yeah.
We appreciate all you guys have done, you've worked so hard.
So much, so much.
You guys have done the work, we just sit here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With the acceptance by the board of the layout, does this mean that the selectman will recommend to the town meeting that this layout be accepted by public?
Well, I, I'd have to defer to, but I believe the, the vote probably does that.
The vote, vote.
So by definition, the select board is bound to that.
Is recommending, would recommend at the town meeting. So an article would be crafted that would be, there's, there's usually a, a little thing at the end.
Underneath it.
Finance committee recommends, selectmen recommend, planning board rec- so.
It would look a lot like the one that you submitted, except it would say board or selectman underneath instead of this petition.
So are both articles re- requ- needed now? That seems redundant to have two articles now on the warrant.
Go ahead.
I think that, I think the question is, and I, and I have not studied your warrants, but I think the question is following each article. Yes, there'll be a parenthetical who is requesting the article, but then there's usually, many towns do another little line where they say, where the advisory board recommends, the selectman recommends. And then sometimes others, if you have a capital committee or a planning board that's needed. And I think the question is, will, will selectman recommends, yes, be following the article to lay out Street or Road? I think that's the question.
Yeah.
It is the question, because I think there's a lot of people that attend the public, the town meeting that haven't been attendance at these meetings or watching on TV. And you guys carry a lot of weight, obviously, you're leaders of our community and, and we want your support. And we want it publicly expressed at the town meeting.
And I can answer the gentleman's question, I've discussed that with town council and yes, the citizen's petition will appear on the warrant because it was submitted in time. And there, there's, there's really no way to take it off without getting everybody who signed it to come in and say, we don't want it anymore. Doesn't make any sense, I did discuss that with Carolyn and, um.
Just pass it over.
She will assist you in, you, you set the order of the articles.
Yeah.
And so either, um, if your article comes first and is approved, then ours would be passed over.
Yep.
Or vice versa, um, that's, and I'm sure she'll advise you about how to do that.
One more, I, in terms of your article, I'm just simply saying then, should it get to, to the town, just this line about expenses and so forth, I would think people who will be at the town meeting, that's one of the first things they're gonna jump on. Which is why I was con- concerned about having it in there.
I would expect that your article will have some money in it as well, because as I explained, um, you can't have costs of implementing an article funded from somewhere else. And there could be something that would come up that we don't know about now, um, that the town would initially have to write a check for. I have not discussed that level of detail with your town council, but I've, I would be surprised to see um, no language like that in an article that would be proposed.
Okay. All right?
I just have one technical question, so, um, the board, the, the board put the warrant article for Street or Road acceptance on there based off a meeting request to do so, so you have an article that's on there. There's also an article that is a citizen's petition. So the board might. So the board might entertain removing its article and just using the citizen petition one, but I don't wanna do that without Street or Road talking to us about what that looked like.
Why why don't we just leave the citizen petition very last? The very, very last article.
So you want both?
I think you should consult with town council before you start taking articles off.
Well, I I think it's important Yeah, I I I think it's important to have the article from the board of selectmen on there. Um, it gives it more weight than than the citizen petition.
It could be required, yeah.
The citizen petition is the board
No, your article is, and I am not in a position to say that with any any half door weight at this meeting because I don't represent you, but I think your town council will tell you that.
Yeah.
So I I d- I think it's
It's it's in that little booklet, it tells it right in that little booklet that you have to put in articles.
I I think we got an email on that, yeah.
We did, Deb said that before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would just, we have the option of putting the order in who we want, I would just leave unless all ten people are here tonight who wanna withdraw the citizen petition, but just leave it on and put it last. And that way we can always just say we we're gonna skip ahead.
I agree.
Leave it on, leave it on, just in case we need to go with that twice.
That is absolutely the customary way to deal with that.
Well, you hope people leave after the first one and then it
Yeah.
Or you call your friends?
Ooh, that's been done.
We did it before.
Alright, well, we've we've got a
But but the citizen petition one holds no weight though, right? If that's passed, it still doesn't, is that correct?
They hold the same weight.
It does hold the same weight?
Alright, so we've got, uh, if no one else is, if if there isn't anything else on this, we've got a a budget hearing that we'd like to get to, so if you're gonna, we'll take a minute or two here to let people uh move along and then we'll get back to our business.
I just wanna hear about the budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with everything, hopefully it works out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys have a pleasure.
Four one four five for you guys with letters and emails and stuff, it's just great. They're gonna get a copy of that. We'll copy of that.
Amy's like, Avery's like, Amy's so damn so jealous. Yeah, yeah, Amy Burns, we got Burns, first name, I spelled three of them.
Not the girls, I got Burns that come in.
Well, I don't know, you didn't know him in the day.
Yeah, honey, we uh uh, DS. We had sports stuff, so just normal, normal hanging around here, didn't really take take much time, girls and a couple play dates, stuff like that, nothing big.
We we missed, we were in the scorpion bowl for a team, so
We were in it too.
Amy's team lost all three games, like five nothing, so and uh it frustrated, I was sad, I was feeling
I was there.
Thank you.
Good job, okay, yeah, thanks.
Sorry for my yelling.
That's not yelling, trust me.
I apologize for saying there was no motion, but I just can't help it, it came out of my mouth. You guys knew. Anyway, I'm doing that.
Hey.
How do I do that?
How are you?
Susan, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I only have one person here to introduce me, that's where.
Okay.
What's that?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Sign my petition, my nomination thingy, please, thank you.
Dog catcher.
Yeah.
Look out dogs.
Queen, queen, I that's actually what that's for.
Yes, I didn't, we didn't feel so bad in the end.
Oh, yeah, we were out there in the in the rain uh most of the weekend, which was fine, those girls did well though, both won their tournaments.
Majority of our team.
Thank you. Yes, please.
They really have a actual from our team, so they are piecing together from all all of the place.
There was uh one one team, um, it's funny, uh, Patty played, her team didn't actually play, but they had entered a team who was in the highest division, they showed their like in the lowest, but they wouldn't change it, so
Carpet back.
British, whatever, he 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 pulled the
But I think they are having a meeting next week, don't want anything, I think, coming.
Six teams together, they're all together, actual, um, you know, stronger team to be up in that division, so it's funny, just seeing six different teams, kids just lopping around together, yeah, they did well though, yeah, they were
Do they have a meeting?
Yeah.
Do they have a meeting going?
Yeah, we were joking with Amy a few days before, like, honey, I said a game and a whole game, you know, a tournament, like, we could, you could stay home if you wanted to.
You guys, uh, alright.
Hi, Susan, um, if you'd like to sign.
Alright, we will uh we will sort of reconvene, restart what we were doing. And um it's seven twenty-five and our next item is a fiscal year twenty proposed budget hearing, which was originally scheduled for seven fifteen, uh slightly delayed, so wanna start us off?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, before we begin, uh, mentioned last meeting that our longtime library director Jane Jane Areta retired, I think she's already traveling the country and just enjoying not being municipal life. Just wanted to introduce Christine Rappera.
Hi.
She uh worked worked as as one of our library assistants and has been selected by the library trustees to serve as interim library director, just wanted to introduce her to the community, uh highly recommended. This appointment could last up to two years.
Okay.
As the library trustees does a um thorough search for what is a very important position in town, which is the library director, so she'll be graciously with us until um we can't serve anymore.
Alright, thanks for
We thank you.
Yeah, thanks for taking over.
I'll let you guys get back to work.
Okay. Alright, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
See ya. Alright. Wanna start us off?
Uh, yes, so um for all the residents that are here, uh, not gonna go through the the entire proposed budget again. Just gonna talk about the changes since uh I presented my proposed budget to you and then go over a couple points of information. And work from your questions, so I have projected uh up here in in your packets under the um TA budget with FinCom sixteen April as the date.
Sixteen April.
Is the document we're working from, so changes that exist. And there's very few, uh, a couple at the top, my cellphone stipend and the election wages and then again, you'll see
Whoa, 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 the 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 cellphone stipend, is that, so fi- fiscal year nineteen approved was six hundred? And then fiscal year two thousand twenty requested is thirty-six hundred?
No, so I'm almost there, so the the cellphone stipend, the election wages, the training wages, what accounting has said is that anytime a human being is paid and their supply is paid or an expense is paid, it needs to be separate accounts. So my town administrator expense account used to be thirty-six hundred, what they wanna do is separate out when you actually pay me, which is for the cellphone stipend. So my expense account is gonna go down to three thousand with six hundred carved out and identified as a cellphone stipend so they can pay the wage.
So that should not be worded town administrator cellphone stipend, shouldn't it be expense account?
So the expense account is underneath it, town administrator expense for three thousand, they wanted to separate out the cellphone stipend and and for transparency and for clarity.
But I'm on the fiscal year two thousand twenty requested where it shows thirty-six hundred for both of those.
Uh, that is, that is requested is the department request, the the line I'd call your attention to is the last line, which is FY twenty twenty FinCom.
Yep.
Uh, that's just a typo, so I would've changed that.
Okay, alright, alright.
So the the actual line we're looking at is the FinCom line, I understand now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The election registration expenses and wages, that used to be seven thousand, you just split out the wages for the uh registration workers and then the actual expenses. Moving down.
Okay, I see.
Under IT maintenance, which is the next yellow. Um, it was sixty-five thousand that I recommended based off of uh some changes in in software, we're not gonna need sixty-five thousand, so dropping that down to sixty thousand to try and cover some of the gap. Uh, there'd be no loss in services, no loss in software there. Uh, you'll see in the next yellow line, police training expenses, we're just carving out the actual cost to train the officers versus the expenses of training, um but it'll be a net zero for the budget.
Yeah.
Regional dispatch, uh, we're working with them, essentially in their budget request, the director's new contract wasn't included in there, so there's a two thousand dollar increase in our assessment.
Why wasn't it included, did they, did they just forget or did, was it not figured out yet?
They just switched town administrators and um he just hadn't gotten to it yet, he's only been in the job for about a month.
Okay.
I don't know why, and this is gonna be a conversation we might have at a different time, that we don't have more control over the Rutland regional budget, so I've been discussing that with them. Um, why the, just the Rutland town administrator negotiates a contract with what would be our department head is is a little odd to me.
Sure.
We need more say in that.
I think we did send a rep to the last negotiation.
Jeff, that was, right?
Yeah, cool. All over year, year, yeah.
They had promised at that time that all the towns would be involved in crafting a budget and
Yeah.
looking at everything and
And there's been nothing more done in terms of that, in fact, I I come in recently and asking about the uh cell tower that we were supposed to have, and I guess there's still problems with them getting around to it.
More than on it, I'm not, I'm not pleased with our involvement in the budget at all, I don't think it's very good. More to come on that. The economic development coordinator position is the next line, so this is based off of um a a calculation of shared assessment costs. In order to continue that grant, we would need to fund it at a seven thousand dollar level, not a three thousand dollar.
So is this in collaboration with all five towns?
Yes.
A- as well as an additional grant?
As well as using the remainder of the
The remainder of the grant, gotcha.
This is
Yeah, go ahead.
This funds Todd Miller?
Yes.
I thought I wrote you a letter and you said that wasn't what it was. Is it?
I don't
Recall.
Okay.
Yes, that funds the econo- the shared economic development coordinator, who right now is Todd Miller.
Hey, uh, just before we get to the next one, can, so the landfill monitoring, um, there's certain requirements after you cap a landfill a certain amount of years, um, it's either twenty or thirty, you you're required to do monitoring, but you can, based on the results, uh, you can ask, 'cause you know contaminants or whatever attenuate over time and things break down um uh underground in a good way sometimes, um. A few years ago, we asked if we could be relieved of that requirement, probably three years now, I'd say, a while ago, can can you maybe look into that again?
So we did, we asked this year, uh, they said no, but they think that next year is a strong possibility.
Okay.
And just for a point of information, that is state property, the landfill.
It is?
Yeah.
So the the next line, Quavon Regional School Assessment, so this is still very much um in flux, there was there was good numbers that we got from the state in terms of increases in in regional spending on transportation as well as ten more dollars a student for uh chapter seventy.
Yep.
Uh, but that hasn't trickled down from the school committee as to how that may or may not change our assessment based off their increased revenues. Um, that number should come in with any luck this week as the House takes up the budget debate, um, they do owe us an assessment number by April thirtieth. Whether or not that number changes or not, um, is is unclear.
So four eight six, the the fiscal year two thousand twenty requested column, the four eight six four six oh eight, is that?
That still stands.
That still stands that we're, but we're saying no.
So um in in my recommendation, so just so that no one's confused, in the FY nineteen approved column, you see four four nine three for Quavon. So they got more chapter seventy-one, which is transportation money last year, so our actual assessment was four four seven one-ish, twenty-three thousand less.
Alright.
Or four four six nine. So that number, there's, that's the number they're using to show their assessment increases. This number comes from our town meeting, we never adjusted that budget line, it'll be realized savings in this in this school. That's what they originally told us it was gonna be, we didn't get the change in assessment till August and we haven't had a town meeting since then. So when I built my budget, it was four percent off the actual number, but it ended up being about four and a half percent because we never adjusted that line. The finance committee, and I'll get to some of the finance committee recommendations and their chairman is here, um, are recommending a five percent assessment increase. Uh, so allowing for some increase to the school budget, but not the full eight point eight three percent.
So how come the percent increase next to the four six nine three says four percent?
So all those are based off my budget currently, 'cause the FinCom hasn't given a recommendation yet, so all the percent increases are based off FY twenty administrator line.
That was the sense of our meeting.
Okay.
The sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah, not a recommendation, but a conversation.
Gotcha.
The um Monty Tech, I had that at a zero percent based off conversation with them, they actually came in about um eight to nine thousand lower than than what we expected, so their assessment will go down. Um, and that number has come to us in a letter form, so we're confident in that number.
Okay.
Um, in terms of veteran benefits, my budget recommended thirty-five thousand, based off spending, um, we believe that thirty thousand would cover the cost of our veteran benefit outlay. Uh, again, I put all the caveats on, this is a required spending, so we would use reserves if we had to in order to make sure all of our veterans are taken care of, but thirty thousand seems to be money that's that we can realize to help cut into our deficit. Library budget, so these changes, there should be right, the director line and then the line under it, these come from the library board of trustees, um, I do not have recommendation power for their budget. Um, they control their own budget, the reason why they control their own budget is so that we don't decrease their budget and and jeopardize state spending. Our state aid for libraries, so because there's a new director coming in, uh, they talked about um offering this at the H one to H three level on the um wage plan that we came in, which would be a decrease. And shifting those monies to the library assistant s- so that they could open, or they could have uh twenty-one hours a week instead of fifteen hours for library assistant coverage for a budget neutral approach.
Doesn't that trigger benefits?
It doesn't because that's shared amongst the four library assistants, so nobody ever works more than nineteen hours per week, okay? But it would expand library services and accommodate a new director.
So under library director, um, we've gone from thirty thousand to twenty-seven thousand, but it shows a percentage increase of two, I don't know if it's supposed to be negative two.
Because it's based off my, the percentage changes are still based off my recommended budget, I'm sorry, that's confusing. Uh, the FinCom is is just representing current changes to my budget.
Okay.
So the final product will have all the percent increases correct.
Okay.
And then the last change that's being contemplated is, uh, there seems to be a very small buffer in the health insurance cost driven mostly because there was a zero percent change from July to January. I'm sorry, from last January to now, so the they do a calendar year proposal for health insurance, not a fiscal year. So for half a year, we expect no change in costs, there could be a change on January one, and we do believe there's enough money in there to accommodate even a even a change. So there's a little bit of a buffer in there and if we had to find dollars, that's what we would, uh, one of the areas we would look to.
Okay.
So again, you saw my budget come in at a two point seven one percent increase, um, and be level funded based off of current changes and current FinCom thinking, uh, even accommodating an increase to the school budget, we still come in at um, at balanced, given the changes that that were talked about there.
What's been the re- going back to the school thing, what's been the reactions sp- most recently with the the Quavon people themselves when we expressed that we felt about the, that they had assessed us at?
So Quavon's
You think it's within reach, they're gonna come back enough so that
So my opinion, this is opinion only, is that that level of of assessment increase is is just not sustainable, there would need to be an in- increase in revenue of some sort, probably from an override to accommodate that or drastic cuts in services, which is an option for sure, but one that I haven't heard been expressed that people wanna do. So a hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of our budget is
Impossible.
Impossible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but from their point of view on the school side, their revenues were slashed this year, um, they're they're getting almost no additional aid and and their costs continue to rise like like ours do. So since they're primarily revenue driven from the state, when the state revenue doesn't come in, it squeezes the towns. Compounding that, we had a valuation this year.
Yeah.
Um, so our minimum local contribution, which is what the state says we should be paying, is higher than everyone else's and our decrease in population was the smallest of all the towns. So us and New Braintree are facing the biggest increase. So my main problem with the school budget is the way that it hasn't addressed the way that the roller coaster is for the town, so every year you have a valuation, you have this craziness that can't be stabilized.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and New Braintree has been claiming this for years, um, and just Um, and New Braintree has been claiming this for years, um, and just hoping that other towns would join them in turning down the budget in order to address their fiscal crisis. Um, but I do, don't think the schools are wrong in saying that they're trying to provide the best education they can for the students, and they only increase their budget by two point eight percent, which is what, which is what we're recommending that our budget is to be increased by. The difference is, we include their, them in our budget, and the only monies that we're increasing for non-school related expenses are about forty thousand dollars, which is nothing in a nine million dollar budget. So every time that they're squeezed by revenue, they squeeze us, and we have to continue to chip away and cut away services that we really don't have the ability to do anymore. Um, that doesn't mean that their case is invalid, it just means the reality is, if residents don't wanna put more money into the system, is that something has to give. And this would crush the next three years' worth of budgets, not just this one.
So what would happen is it would go into the, you know, the one twelfth. Um, did you have discussions with them about that? If everybody says no, you know, the town's saying no or wha- or whatever, it goes, you, you divide by twelve of how much money that the towns do commit to it and to their total budget, and it gets reviewed by the state to whether or not the state's gonna come in and intervene. In the meantime, the schools are still trying to mess with things to get it so that they can afford it. So we've been through this a couple times. Uh, it never got to the furthest level, but it got to the point where, um, you know, the, the, the divided by twelve thing means, is that you have a certain amount of money that can't fund the actual budget. You divide it by twelve, eventually you get to month ten and there's no more money left. So that's the thought process behind it, is that you just move, move ahead and try to figure it out on the way through, so there's a pretty likely possibility of that happening.
So I'd be happy to take any questions on that or continue to.
Hurry on, I'm good.
Are you guys good?
Good.
Yep.
So the next information I wanted to show you in the public is, information gets thrown around on, uh, so this is town meeting free cash calculations in your packet.
Is this a separate attachment?
This is a separate spreadsheet, yeah.
I mean, but is it in the same spreadsheet?
It's its own spreadsheet.
What I mean is it, it, it's not a tab at the bottom of?
No.
No, it's back in the main, the main, here, it's under free cash.
Advance it one and it'll come up, please, that did for me. Which is unusual, which is unusual.
So this is information, so based off of the current construction of the warrant and the budget, this is where we would be at in terms of, of town reserves and our ability to fund things. So this is based off a budget of nine point two six eight million, which is, uh, what my budget recommended. So this does not include, say, another eighty thousand, hundred and eighty thousand for the school assessment. So the reason why free cash is listed here at, even though we certified at four oh one, five one three, three oh one, five one three, is we're currently using a hundred thousand in our operating budget in order to cover operating costs. Down from a hundred and thirty-three last year and on target for our, say, two to three year goal to eliminate the use of free cash, but still part of the budget.
Okay.
So really, when we say we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit, we really have a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit, um, but we're working on reducing that reliance. Then we also have included in the current construction of the warrant based off my recommendation is the inclusion of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten in municipal stabilization reserves, um, for a total of three hundred and sixty thousand. Then the capital, all the capital items that are currently in total two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then current warrant articles included in the, in the town meeting warrant draft are senior work off of fifteen thousand cemetery equipment at sixty-five hundred, and a transfer of seventeen fifty-five back into the preservation fund, as we discussed in the draft review, for a total of twenty-three thousand. So that leaves us with, if everything stays the same, seventy-four thousand in free cash. It's my recommendation that we keep as close to a hundred thousand dollars in reserve free cash as possible to allow for budget flexibility and for changes, and also to make sure that we can fund that gap that we're filling next year. So if free cash came in at zero, you'd still have that ability to fund the operating budget at the same level.
Okay.
Also including the town meeting warrant, um, you see on the reserve side here, the stabilization fund is currently at three hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and fifty. Um, the town meeting warrant article that, um, that I am recommending includes getting rid of all of the excess capital budget items we have and putting that into the stabilization fund for a small increase of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars to bring that to four point three six percent of the operating budget with our goal of five percent being within reach in a couple years. Using money from the municipals, the next line, from the municipal stabilization, brings that down to a hundred thousand or one point eight percent of the operating budget. Our goal being one percent, so we're still above that goal. And then free cash would be a little under one percent at seventy-four thousand remaining for a total reserve of six point two four percent without certification of next year's free cash, which we expect to come in somewhere between three and five percent of the operating budget.
Okay.
So a total reserve of about ten thousand, uh, ten percent, not ten thousand, that would not be enough. That's a picture to help make decisions in terms of, um, the warrant and the budget combined.
Okay.
So, um, what this shows you is if more free cash was used to, say, cover that school assessment or any increase in budget costs, or any changes or anything to the, the operating recommendations, you have seventy-four thousand to play with, uh, but again, you lose that, that stability and that flexibility that that money provides, um, and just creates a further hole down the road. Um, but a lot of times people recommend, well, we have this free cash, we have this certified free cash. I'm trying to put it in a picture of our policies and, and long-term thinking and planning in order to help guide those decisions.
We're gonna go over capital here, or you have another slide?
Next is capital.
Okay.
So on the capital side, you asked for a few, um, comments from the staff in terms of why they asked for, for certain things. So start off with Chief Perrin, uh, two items that were discussed were the firearms re- replacement and the vehicle rotation. So for firearms, the sidearms were last purchased in two thousand eight, uh, so they've had the pistols for eleven years, uh, primarily due to weather and being fired. They said it's about two hundred rounds per training session a couple times a year. Um, during qualifications, they've had some increased jams and misfires. So although the officers do a great job of cleaning and maintaining their sidearms, eleven years is just where things start to break down. So they're looking to purchase new blocks that would address these issues and have more reliability. This is three thousand out of our free cash and the rest of it being paid for from the firearms account.
We still against it, are you for it?
Uh, I'm fine with it, yeah.
Vehicle rotation, um, so adding a new yes, new SUV allows, uh, the police to rotate three frontline vehicles. So each one of their SUVs puts on thirty-five thousand miles a year, not counting idle time. Uh, where normally an officer drives about seventy thousand miles for patrols, if you divide that by three, you only have twenty-three thousand for vehicle. So this will allow for a three point five to four year replacement cycle or every other year, rather than our current stance, which is two and a half to three years. So the cruisers have major issues once they reach a hundred thousand miles, and then the cost of maintenance is increased.
Ryan, I have a question for you out there with the cruisers. So there's, we have the chief has a car. There's two Ford Explorer type cruisers, and there's one like an old Crown Vic that's on the end, looks like it's a flat tire in the front.
The Ford Taurus, yeah.
Ford Taurus. What's, uh, what's the word on that?
So the Ford Taurus is one.
That hasn't moved in ages.
That's the one they're looking to replace. It's got a hundred and thirty thousand in, in mechanical issues. So this would be the one replaced by a SUV like the others to have three front lines.
So that was gonna be sold, traded in, ooh, all those lines?
Whatever is most cost advantageous. Usually it's a trade-in in that situation, but.
Yeah, okay.
So the idea is every other year to get in a consistent capital cycle and then make sure that vehicles are reliable, and we don't have a vehicle just sitting there. So that's from the chief.
Alright, yeah, thank him for the thorough review and the explanation.
Um, so then from Travis, two, two requests. Uh, one was for road estimates, which I'll get to next, uh, cause that's part of the warrant. And then for the, um, FY twenty nineteen ninety-eight wing truck replacement. So the vehicle that's being proposed to be replaced is a nineteen ninety-eight. Um, as, as he said last year, when he came to with this, for the last four years, the repairs have totaled forty thousand-ish on this vehicle. Uh, it's a twenty-one-year-old vehicle with heavy rust and rot repairs. Twenty-one years of plowing with the nineteen ninety-eight, and an underpowd- underpowered three hundred horsepower motor has taken its toll, especially when pushing snow and plow up the hills. It's had a lot of downtime this year with the sander chain breaking, um, and they had to put a new piece of steel on it, on the track to stop salt from spilling out. Uh, the new one would be two trucks in one, take care of Route sixty-eight, Old Princeton Road, Old Princeton Cut Off, Dogwood North and South, and at times plow the school in Recfield. Uh, it takes two hours for one cleanup from the center of the road to the edge of the road on Route sixty-eight with a nineteen ninety-eight Ford wing truck. When the wing truck goes down, I have to take another truck away from its route and run tandem, which then takes three hours to complete one, so it's just not efficient. So this is, again, a mainline truck, um, which, which is why it's so vital. So when it goes down, you know, public safety and, and services go down, as we know, with, uh, snow clearance. So new wing trucks have, uh, has emissions and a lot of expensive electrical parts that you would need. This is the truck that was requested last year, a two hundred thousand dollar truck, so he's looking at alternatives to try and save costs and to create the type of power and reliability that, that he wants. So he came up with the idea of replacing with an Oshkosh series with low miles, so a used car under a hundred thousand, not the two hundred thousand dollar wing truck that would normally be used on a route like this. So it, it would be purchased, no rust, new plows, new strobes, and they'd convert the brakes, which is the most expensive repair on an Oshkosh. Uh, so everyone that has them that he talked to said the brakes are the most expensive repair part. They have a conversion kit now that's reducing those and making it a local part, and something easier to get.
What did Pat have to say about this last time, do you remember?
Well, I think he was concerned, I don't know if it was like a, uh, like replacing a transfer case or something, you know, and he said that Westminster had one and they weren't happy with it, but if Travis has researched it, and he's the one that's gonna deal with it. One thing about this is it's mechanical, it's not computerized, you know, and he should be able to repair it. Most of the things in-house.
He does get to that, so he says, I know this is a lot, but I think it's important because this is an expensive purchase. So bearing seals, brakes, and other day, wear and tear items they can get from Fleet Pride and any other Oshkosh items we can get from Boils Motor Sales in New York, which are a day or two out. Uh, the cost of the vehicle is under a hundred thousand. Um, so there, there will be a request to replace another, uh, the O four next year. So the idea was to replace two for the price of the one, two hundred thousand dollars. So he spoke with Dave Albert, who's a mechanic at Westminster DPW, to ask what they thought of their Oshkosh. Dave said they bought it in two thousand eight and haven't done anything other than brakes and the front drive shaft, which they thought was neglect of the mounting body. Had no other problems. They also spoke with John Tessarini of the Barnstable DPW and asked how he liked his Oshkosh. John stated they bought one, liked how it handled the tough storms, and they ended up buying four more. Uh, standard wear and tear items they replace. John also stated the Oshkosh was very reliable, unlike the new international trucks they bought. Um, and he closes by saying, he did a lot of research and he felt it was the best fit for the town, um, based off finances and, and how he could save money, but also have the durability, um, to not have to replace it again anytime soon. So our current fleet right now is this ninety-eight, an O four Mack Granite Dump Truck, an O nine Sterling, and then the freight liners, a twelve or fifteen and an eighteen freight liner, which is the one we purchased recently. So the two that are looking to be replaced are the nineteen ninety-eight and the O four. Uh, the others are in excellent condition.
What brand was the ninety-eight and the O four?
Ninety-eight is a Ford L eight thousand wing truck, and the O four is a Mack Granite Dump, both with, um, a little over sixty thousand miles. Which doesn't sound like a lot to a resident, but that's a lot for a, a plow truck that has to do the type of work that this does.
Sounds to me like, I mean, you know, last year we sort of passed it over because it was two hundred and we had all these other requests, but sounds to me like you did a lot of research into making this as palatable as possible to us, and just to hear, you know, leading off with the, you know, last few years, forty thousand dollars in repairs, it's starting to be like, you know, we gotta get rid of, get rid of the dinosaur here and.
I, I'm concerned because we haven't even finished paying off the last truck we bought.
I know, I, when you just said there, I, I hear you, it's just.
You know, and then he wants to get into a situation where every two years you're gonna be buying a six-figure truck.
See, I don't think so. That's, I'm not even listening about the two thousand four one right now. I'm just thinking of the actual ninety-eight, how much money it's been cost to, to deal with it, and the fact that it's gonna have to get replaced. And, and by no means, you know, psychologically committing to, you know, uh, every two year sort of situation. I just feels like, for this specific scenario, it feels like it's probably the right idea.
So we wouldn't recommend a two-year cycle for this, um, and we're working, as I promised you last time, on a long-term vehicle replacement plan, so you can see what this would look like over ten years. Uh, the DPW is not recommending every other year, it'd be too expensive. They're too, too big a purchase to do that often. So you've just gotta get these purchases right and, and try and be as efficient as possible.
How many more years we have left on the last dump truck, do you know, offhand?
To borrow?
Yeah.
For four, four, five years, depending on how we do it in the fall.
But still, there's gonna be three or four years, years next year.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like it's just about to fall off the books, and it's necessary, becoming more and more of a necessary item.
You'll, you'll see in my recommendations you always is, is to not borrow for dump trucks to try and pay them off, uh, within the capital plan when they come up, which means you couldn't do it every year there, because we don't generate enough free cash. But, um, to borrow for a hundred and two hundred thousand dollar projects when you can try and accrue the free cash to do it is, is a better way. Cause it's tying up the operating budget for four or five years.
So did, uh, did the FinCom discuss the capital at all?
Um, just, just to review it.
Okay.
We've, no, we've made no recommendations. We have a meeting scheduled, uh, for this Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at which we will make our recommendations.
I, I just, I have a, I've always had a little issue with, uh, kind of the schedule of DPW purchases, just because I don't feel like there's a plan. It's just sort of, what, we need a truck, we need a truck, we need a truck. And, um, I guess I feel more, a lot more comfortable, and I'm, I'm happy that Travis was able to, you know, look for something else besides a new truck and all, so I give him credit for that. But I, I think personally, before I can support this at town meeting, it's, I, I need to see some kind of plan instead of dumping six figures in every couple of years for a dump truck that we really use three months out of the year.
Well, isn't that what he's working on?
Yes.
I mean, he's kinda, kinda gotta get the inventory in shape before you can have any kind of plan.
But a couple of years ago, we were told the inventory was in shape. At least that's what I heard, and I don't know.
How, how far along is he in that?
It's, it's something I'm pushing in all departments. Uh, I think we could have it within whatever timeframe you need.
Okay, next week?
Yeah, but my, my recommendation is that Travis inherited some older stuff, and the impact of his decisions won't be felt for a couple more years, so having a plan makes sense. Uh, but I do believe that especially these, these two will need to be replaced at some point. Uh, and then you have these, you know, heavy, well-purchased, expensive freight liners that should last, uh, and this one should last. So if Travis is right in his assessment, and I believe he is, then there shouldn't be big purchases for a few. You should get the brake that I think that you're looking for, the town's looking for.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, you know, as soon as I hear nineteen ninety-eight, that's kind of my warning sign.
Yeah, does he have a year on the, this truck, the one he wants to purchase, the Oshkosh, is there a year stated in?
Uh, so there's, there isn't a car, there isn't one identified. It will be older, but it, the Oshkoshes are different pieces.
Yeah, they're bulletproof and, um, you know, buying new doesn't always guarantee reliability. You know, with some of the, uh, computers, especially when they're plowing, and, um, if a new truck wants to shut down, it's gonna shut down and you're gonna be reduced to idle and
Yeah, or it, it.
Can't even move it.
It's a, it's emissions tell it what it can do and what it can't do.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it's.
Approach, dude, this is a straight shot piece of equipment that is designed to be powerful and do a lot of work quickly in a straight shot. This wouldn't be going down side roads, and it's not designed for that. You need other vehicles for that, and he's put that into his assessment.
Okay, um, anything further on that from anybody? So then we got a roller?
Yes, so that was the only thing to ask, but I'm glad to speak on any of the other capital or any other budget items.
Yeah, sure, I just, I guess wanted to bring the roller up again, and, and he, he talked about it, I think, as far as, um, the, the reasoning for it. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the reasoning for the roller was, um, a couple of reasons. One is, uh, so that after we grade the dirt roads, we can then compact it to lock it down into place, and we do have a fair amount of dirt roads, as well as when we're placing, uh, whether it be, uh, hot mixed asphalt or cold patch, we can use it to roll it down to keep it into place as well. Is that pretty much his, his justification?
So closest to here, uh, they, so they rented a roller this year was
And not have to rent it, right?
About five thousand for a month.
Yeah.
Uh, had to push weather-dependent all of the work into that month, and I asked him to do that to test whether or not we actually needed a roller. Uh, he was very amenable to that. Um, so we rented it and were able to use it. You might have seen it on the trailers around town. Uh, when they did patchwork with that, it, it was more permanent and there's less complaints from it. Um, and biggest example is Elm Street, when they did the patching there, they were able to sort of fill holes and, and not have some of the issues. It is expensive, that material, so you can't. It is expensive, that material, so you can't do it everywhere, but where they did, the roller worked really well. And the the main contributor is on uh repairs and and gratings to to the dirt roads, as you mentioned. And to um. Millings, et cetera. To be able to compact that whenever you do it, whenever you need it, is gonna decrease resident concerns and the use of material and wasted money.
So to to the point, thank you, so to the point of our previous discussion and brought up by Jamie as well, about new versus uh. We will use this even less than the dump truck, right? I mean, because we don't. Pave all that necessarily or compact. Is this a new vehicle, you know, or a new item?
I know it wouldn't be more than what we've asked for.
No, no, I'm just saying whether or not he looked into, because we it's.
I believe it would be a used piece with a trailer.
Okay.
And that trailer would be multiple use to bring pieces of equipment for registration, inspections, et cetera, which we don't have the ability to do now necessarily.
So he didn't like the leasing for a month idea, he'd rather purchase, obviously.
It's just the the ability to do what you need to do is really limited. And then that month, there was like a week of rains, we really felt like we were wasting some money and some time there. Um, if we had our own roller, we'd be able to to do even spot patchwork and 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 just increase the effectiveness of the limited materials and time we have.
Okay.
And we did look into sharing, you know, we we did tons of re- this this my opinion is this is the most cost-effective. Is to have our own, to use it, to train our guys on and do a good job with it.
Okay.
So pending the questions, the next piece that you asked for was um discussion about. What it would look like if we increased um. Our road, I don't know how to say it better than saying if if we provided the type of override that would allow us to expand the capabilities of our road repair plan. So it was discussed that this this could possibly be a three or five-year um exclusion of of Prop two and a half in order to fix some of our most troubled roads and some of the comments you made were.
And how much per year, just so we have that on the table?
It was to match chapter ninety, which is three hundred and fifty thousand, or one point seven five million over the next five years if you did a five-year plan.
Yep. So.
So there's a couple technical things I wanted to just walk you through in terms of how we would fund that and then uh see the roads. So a capital outlay like we did for the roof, the library roof. Is a one-year increase of taxes in order to pay for something. So last year we had the library roof, we said we needed a hundred thousand dollars, so we increased taxes to pay for that. Another way to do that is through what everyone uses as a term is debt exclusion, so if you're gonna borrow over X amount of years, you can increase taxes for those years in order to pay for that project. What you can't do is exclude money for, say, a road project or an undefined road project over five years without voting it every single year. Which would defeat the purpose of trying to tie everyone together into one plan to spread support around. So what you can do is one year, one plan. Or you could do something that that is done in many towns, which is create a stabilization fund like we have for capital. And you can fund that with an override. So you would create a, just for sake of discussion, a road repair stabilization fund and authorize funding that stabilization fund. With override dollars that are targeted just for the roads.
Annually.
So in once you do the first one, that would come from town meeting and an election vote, the next year the Board of Selectmen can authorize its continued funding. In perpetuity. So if you said we're gonna fund first year of stabilization fund at two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred fifty thousand, whatever dollar amount. That has to pass town meeting and election, then the next year the board could could do it again with just a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
I don't know if everyone's gonna like that.
So the the safeguards are you can only spend from the stabilization fund with a two-thirds vote. At town meeting and the board could some years say, no, we're not gonna do it, or town meeting can take away the the ability entirely after a project is done.
And you can't cap it though, um?
You can't. But you can do it year to year and it gives you some flexibility if another project came up. I'm not advocating either way, I'm just giving you the the left and right limits.
Sure, I mean, I just feel like the first question's gonna be, so you guys can do this forever, so for thirty years, we're gonna spend ten million dollars on on, you know, on on roads, which I I don't necessarily know everyone would be against either.
No one would complain about roads.
I know that, so I'm just I'm trying to say what the uh the the.
And the whole reasoning was to get it to go with one vote. And not to do it every year because as the roads get paved, there'd be less support, I felt.
Correct.
Because once your road's done, you're not gonna vote, so.
And I I understand your point again, I'm not advocating either way. There would be tremendous amount of pressure on a Board of Selectmen. Um, if people didn't like the continuing, it would be pretty hard to 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 vote in public to say, let's do it again.
Alright, so let's go back, how do you do this with one vote then?
So you would create a stabilization fund.
Right.
Say the road repair stabilization fund, and you would vote to fund it using override dollars.
Okay.
Equal to chapter ninety.
Whatever dollar amount you said, so you could do it equal.
Can you do it equal to chapter ninety or can you have to say a number?
It has to be a number.
So it's three fifty, whatever, some number. Okay, sorry.
Year one, that warrant article would create the stabilization and then you would create the funding and then you'd have an election. Like any other Prop two and a half override. The next year, the Board of Selectmen have the authority to increase up to that level plus two and a half percent. And continue to fund that stabilization fund. So you could put it out like this is a five-year plan, but there's nothing tying the Board of Selectmen four years from now to that plan.
Because if you, because you're so you're talking about a general override.
But it has to go into that account if you vote it that way. So it's a protected general override. You can't use it for anything else but that stabilization account. So a lot of people use this for capital, so they'll come up with a capital plan, a ten-year capital plan, and they'll say we're gonna put two hundred fifty thousand per year in our capital stabilization fund. And then that's how they pay for capital and they don't worry about free cash expenditures or borrowing.
Dan, you wanna read the roads or maybe they can zoom in on the list?
Yeah, let me just note uh that these are in no particular order.
So this is not, this is not a plan per se, this is costs.
Right.
This is cost, so I thought this was the best way to present it until we had a better idea of funding and and long-term, so these are estimated costs. Based off current projections and and like projections, so like we would do in our other plan for roads.
Exclusive of our upcoming fiscal year.
Yeah, so that's already said.
Also, it doesn't include this drop grant.
So we would be very aggressive in trying to find other sources of funny funding. Hopefully the state gave us more chapter ninety, so that would cut into this as well. But I wanted the board and the public to see the cost of each road. Many of these have been discussed. Many of these are known problems, some of them were identified tonight, you know, the Dogwoods come to mind, Laurel and Jordy were in here as well. Um, some of these are very small costs, but they just don't, they don't have the resident capacity of, say, other towns. Um, and they don't fit into sort of geographical focuses, uh, like we try and do when we do these types of plans. So what would happen is if there was an inject of new money is this year is set, but we would reconstruct the entire plan and bring that to the public and to you for for approval. Based off these numbers.
Okay.
But I think I heard from the board in the last meeting that some of these are more troublesome roads and would be done as soon as possible.
Yep.
And so this equals the one point seven million.
Ish.
Roughly, like just under, I believe.
So we were pulling our hair out trying to to fit it in because a lot of the roads that are in the, say, the fifth year or the sixth year of the plan we presented would be moved up if there was more money. And then the two plans would kind of conflict.
So people are just to Jamie's.
Either of these roads that are in addition to what's on the list.
This is in addition to the plan that we've already done.
To what's on this, yeah, okay.
So I there people can see what's on the screen, right?
Can you zoom in a little more, Ryan? Just so people on at home can see it.
And I can certainly read down them too.
Alright, so so just so I can get this straight. If we were to do the five-year override for roads, these are the additional roads that would be put in?
These would be fit into a plan. But also to 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 show you that at three fifty a year, you know, you're talking just pulling the first two names on the list, that's Dogwood North and Jordy Lane. Would consume that entire year. These roads, they're not, they're not cheap, that's not really telling anyone something they don't know.
Right, yeah, the order of all this we can figure out, that's gonna be many discussions, but overall it's the it's the overall concept of establishing this, which I'm in favor of. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we've got to do something because there's so many complaints, uh, and not only, you know, your vehicles, but, you know, then there's the emergency response quicker. Uh, although that's another story, but the um, the damage to the plows and then the plows can plow so much faster, they can do a nicer job. And less uh less wear and tear on the plow trucks as they're driving over these roads constantly. Loaded with potholes and they can't do a good job, it beats the vehicles up and it's just all-around improvement.
So why can't we do a five-year debt exclusion then?
You can do a debt ex- so debt exclusion is only for borrowing.
Right.
So we'd have to borrow the money in total.
Up front.
And then pay it off over time, so you'd lose a lot of buying power. You can do it that way, but. You'd you'd lose a lot in terms of interest, et cetera, over over the course of the time.
So can you put in um. I I think it's gonna be a harder, I think people would get behind this, but I think it's gonna be a really hard sell to say, yep, we're gonna do an override and yep, we promise that in five years we'll we'll stop overriding.
Agree.
So can you put in the warrant article, would it hold legal weight to say that? In whatever year, two thousand twenty-five? This'll come back up for a vote for renewal or?
I did ask that, no.
That's kind of what I asked, a cap.
You what? A cap. I did ask that because that would make sense, but you can't. Because they can't, so the reason why is you can't predict what the board's gonna look like in a year or two years or three years, or that you need to change, so they they make you make the decision upfront. So the argument from Department of Revenue was then just vote it down the next year and you don't have to worry about it.
Right, I know, that's it, I mean, that's what it is, just voting it down.
Should we do it for just five hundred thousand one year?
No, I think you have to do a plan. I think you have to do a. You ha- you have to have a a longer-term plan than that.
I I think we should just try it. I mean, I think we should just try it like this, I mean, we've been presented with all of our options, it makes most sense to have a fund in there and we should just try it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So there's no way that we can we can put in an article to direct a warrant article in five years to reappear, to reauthorize that?
No, because you can't, you can't bind the future Board of Selectmen.
So so the only other option then would be to just do it for a single year, every year.
You'll never get that passed.
Yeah.
It's for me.
Yeah. How much would interest be on one point whatever million?
Be uncomfortable.
Guessing?
Just guessing, but I can get you the answer.
Let me see how much that interest is.
So. Let's do some napkin math that I love doing, um.
What what are the prevailing rates for that?
So so on the two thousand thirteen road projects, I don't know the total value off the top of my head, but it's similar, we're paying. We paid thirty thousand in FY eighteen, twenty thousand this year. Uh, so it's in the, you know, two percent of one to seven five. Couple hundred grand.
Over ten, I said over ten years.
Well, however long you decide to borrow.
Right, so let me see. I'm just trying to think, like, if it's if it's gonna be thirty five thousand in interest over five years, which is probably more than that, but. You know, do we just say it's one point seven plus, one point five plus thirty five thousand? Then we have our borrowing cost covered.
Why do you think that would be more palatable?
Because it's time limited. It's time limited, I might, what's giving me, and I'm okay with with the with every year.
Right. Okay.
But I think what's what is gonna give a lot of people pause is that you're now giving. This board, the next board, then the board after that, authority to just have an override that just keeps going and going and going and going.
Even though it's designated, it's targeted for the roads.
I I I think that's gonna give people more pause than.
Okay.
Having you just say for the next five years, this is our plan, we're gonna get these roads done, what we've already planned done. And uh go from there. So let me see, one. One, five, zero, zero, zero. Long-term, let's do five years. Let's do, I think the statehouse bond's around three percent.
Ish.
So total interest would be eighty thousand dollars at three percent.
What's the loan amount?
One point five million. Was it one point seven five? One point seven five? Yeah. Maybe this is gonna take a while if you're gonna take.
It's braver than me.
How many years?
Five. Zero, five years, three percent, calculate. That can't be right. Three, no, it'd be seventeen million, that's that's not right.
And do what?
I gotta take a zero off here, hold on. That's that, that's a lot of money. Alright, so hun- one point seven five is a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Over five years.
Yeah, that's a lot.
That's a couple roads, you're going to be roads.
I mean, I mean, we could go the other way and just hope the select board in the future has enough sense to to start. After five years.
I I also agree with the fact that if, I mean, I think if if it got to a point where, I mean, people would just go nutty and and it would just. Become a citizen petition or something like that, it would just get to a point there where if it had enough support, I don't, it's not.
Yeah.
Um, it's not like a divisive issue at the root of it, so because of that.
No, it's not.
I think if all the roads get fixed, that will be a good problem to have.
Right, the road gets fixed, then there's nothing to spend, especially if it only goes into.
Then there's nothing and there's nothing to spend it on, that'll be a good problem to have.
Right, especially if it's only going into a road fund.
Right.
Exactly.
Because if everything's fixed, everything looks great.
Because I don't see a downside here, because everybody's gonna want their road fixed.
Tom?
Is it clear what the citizenry gets for the money? In other words, what are they buying, a patch or a grinded up uh base coat, finish coat, or just what?
I don't think it's clear, I think it's into a, you know, road maintenance fund or what do we, we haven't even decided what to call it yet, right?
But but the the plan that Travis originally presented is all is is repaving reconstruction of the roads, not a patch, it's a full.
Take it down.
Take it down.
Yeah, that's what those dollars represent.
Right.
Bringing it down and doing all the.
There is some maintenance to some of them, um, and we are neglecting maintenance in order to focus on repairs. Uh, which is why some roads that were just done are falling apart.
But if we do this, then we can definitely use chapter ninety for some of that stuff as well, wh- whereas this is just sort of dedicated to repaving roads.
So with the inclusion of one point seven five million dollars, that would get us to about eighty percent of the backlog of of roads. And then we could start using chapter ninety for maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because you'd have the majority of roads in in good shape.
And that chapter ninety money should stay for roads, we don't want to start purchasing equipment. Like, oh, we've got this money now, let's go purchase equip- no, everything has to stay.
No, it's a good point.
So we address, you know, I hate to throw a number out there, but about eighty percent of the backlog problem and allow us to be attainable to maintaining roads the way it should be done, using the dollars that we have.
In addition to still applying for complete streets and strap grants and all that sort of stuff to supplement um as well.
Let's give it a shot, can't hurt.
And again, if you happen to live on one of these roads that's just so awful, like Flag or or, you know, and you've got company coming over and you're like, what the hell kind of town do you live in?
Your alternative is to have you like, have you like your road, because it's gonna stay like that as it was.
It's awful.
But I think this is important here, what you have up here to to show everybody and get this out now. To to people in town to say that, you know, if we can do this five-year. Um, override into a road account, you know, these are the roads that will get done over the next five years. I mean, just, you know, Dogwood North, Jordy Lane, Laurel and Dogwood South. I mean, I know this, we we always, we don't really worry about politics too much here, we do what's right, but at the same time, if you want this to pass, there's a heck of a lot of people on those roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and the difference between, you know, two, three hundred votes that you're gonna come out of that that development over there is can make or break the success of something like this. So I think getting something like this out um to the public early to say, if if this passes. In addition to everything that's in our five-year plan, which I think is important to put out too, and say, you know, look, look what's gonna get done, all these residential areas are gonna get done in the next five years. Very important, I think, to make make this a successful.
So it's double.
Override.
This list almost.
It's double this list, because it's all this stuff.
This is just for the uh two and a half.
Right.
Right.
Override, yeah.
So there's a lot of people that'll be covered by the original five-year plan and then this five-year plan that overlays it. Um, you can have a lot of success.
Plus, you know, actively having just seen sixty-eight south hap- Thus, you know, actively having just seen sixty-eight south happen, i- this coming year seeing sixty-eight north happen, we're in the future of the center and all that, all that stuff put together.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I see my road on here. That's pretty exciting.
Yeah, I think you've never confused yourself, actually. I saw that.
Mine's not that bad, but it's amazing. Probably just an oval, like.
Yeah.
Or cracks, you know.
It's not always total reclamation. It's maintenance and it's preventing it from being a really expensive problem, cause five years from now, the roads are gonna look different. I know it doesn't feel like it, but they do.
Okay, you know, remember one of the engineers from Malone and McBroom, McBroom, Malone, whatever it is.
Malone and McBroom.
We had some questions about hail, or one of them was falling fall apart. They remembered, they pretty much said, like, it's gonna happen. Hubbard's one big wetland, like, there's just no way to
Yeah.
to keep our roads in great shape.
Yeah, you get frost action, you know, and they crack, then you then, you know, what's a life expectancy? Fifteen, twenty years, you gotta seal or crack, and then twenty years, it's, but we go forty years, you know, instead of, you know.
Yeah. Exactly.
Sound good.
Okay, alright, well, what's next?
So is that what you want me to draft for?
Yep.
For the stabilization fund?
And make it very clear that that override goes into a road stabilization fund. It does not get, and there's no way it can be used for pet projects and
Anything but road.
buildings and all that stuff.
Other stuff. Right.
Can't buy a truck with it. You can, you just, we have to make that extremely clear. This is only for road reconstruction and road repair.
Okay, so that is the, besides the draft warrant review, budget presentation that I did, uh that that is the new information and and questions that were asked, so of course can dig into anything else deeper or get more information. The idea is that um we would vote on a budget next week, next Monday.
Yep.
It can be pushed a week. You have room there. You have another week, um but this is going to be finalized on the thirteenth.
Nope, I think we're good, since we've decided how much we're gonna be giving the schools, um we should be able to uh, we should be able to do it next week. Okay, so so um you had mentioned something about the 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 warrant again. Do we need to review that?
Uh, so the the warrant items, I can get more information or clarification on on any items that you need, continuing to review them with the finance committee.
I don't have any. I was just, I I thought you put in the emails.
Next meeting, we're gonna review it again for a final vote on the third, finalizing and signing on the thirteenth.
Okay. Sounds good.
So I'll need strong direction next week, unless there's another meeting.
Tom?
During the articles, uh have they gone to the uh town attorney?
They will, definitely, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and then um some of them may require public hearings, and and I'd like to just cover the schedule so that that can happen.
It's a good point. So there's there's two articles on here. Uh, one in particular changes the zoning bylaws, so that is.
Thirty-one, thirty-two? Thirty-one.
Doesn't matter the number, just puts the process.
Yeah, thirty-one, just so they can see it. So um this would need to be referred to the planning board for their action and recommendation and report.
Okay.
But our meeting schedule and stuff, when could I anticipate it?
If the board votes now, you'll have it tomorrow.
Oh, I didn't know you were gonna vote.
I didn't either, and I'm glad you reminded me.
So uh this would be a motion to approve the um warrant?
It's not approve, it's to refer this matter to the planning board for
Refer this matter.
uh review. This was submitted legally, so it is gonna be on the warrant. It's just putting it through its process of going to the planning board.
Okay, sounds good. Somebody wanna make that motion? If they understand it?
Say that again.
It it would be a motion to.
Remand that to the planning board for review.
Planning board, yeah.
Alright, so I will make a motion to remand art- the current article thirty-one um to amend zoning bylaw, article seven, to the planning board for the review.
Second motion.
Discussion.
Um, has the, you said the lawyer will also have have a a shot at it to review it?
Yeah, so I was gonna get direction from the board and send this to town council for its first review for um in-depth review next meeting, well, it's sort of the final articles.
Sure. Yeah, sounds good.
It's pretty close, though. It's a seventy-five percent solution right now.
Okay.
Understanding that the planning board won't have them till we hear from the lawyer.
That's right. I'll highlight it for, focus on that first.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So is that it for the budget?
That is it.
Okay. Sticking around?
Why not?
Alright, can we move along?
Yes.
Alright, so item five is uh new business, which is the police ride-along policy and release, which we got instantaneously after our last meeting.
Yeah, so this is um been worked on for a while um in response to uh to an employee issue that we had and a policy issue that was discovered and by request of the board of selectmen. So this ride-along policy is um revised and the highlighted change under control of a ride-along, uh now includes that ride-alongs will not be allowed to exit the cruiser in any situations, which.
Yep. Cut and dry.
This is the board, yes.
Cut and dry, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the police ride-along policy as presented.
Second motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, now we have a uh Normington settlement agreement. This was the election scandal?
Yes, so uh town of Hubbardson and our town clerk were named in a suit. Um, this was um just simply distilled to challenge the rule of wearing um election, I don't wanna say propaganda, but materials within a certain range of of an election site. So the reason why Hubbardson was included is is one of the plaintiffs was from Hubbardson, so it was no, of no fault of the town or or town clerk per se, except just by coincidence. Townsend was also named party. Um, we discussed this previously and and settled this case, um so this is the agreement based off that settlement. Already sound, signed by um the plaintiffs and Townsend, so we're the last signature.
Okay. What did the state cough up, since it's their law?
Yeah.
What's up?
Did the state cough up anything since it was their law?
It's designed to be a little program, to just wait until they say.
Yes.
What what happened?
Good.
What happened?
So they, I mean, they just, again, we were just randomly chosen to be part part of this, and they were just contesting whether or not you need to be a hundred and fifty feet away or whatever to wear election stuff. And so it went back and forth, and the the state set decided, we're not gonna, we're gonna settle, so.
Would you wear a vote for children t-shirt?
Correct, within a certain distance, or you try to campaign within a certain distance, all that sort of stuff. So um they, there's a settlement amount that the state, so we didn't actually have to spend any money here.
So we will have to pay a deductible based off our town insurance.
Right. Town insurance, so the deductible we have to pay, but they settled, and and the settlement is mostly to pay attorney fees, is what really is that, is what it is. And again, it's, a deductible is only coming out of our pocket. Um, we weren't really driving the, driving the bus.
Right, so these two plaintiffs were, one from Townsend, one from Hubbardson, got together, decided they wanted to challenge the state election law.
Yeah.
So Hubbardson.
Is it a hundred bucks or a hundred thousand bucks?
One of them was awarded two hundred, one of them was awarded one hundred, and then the attorneys.
Dollars, not thousands.
And then, and then the lawyers got fourteen grand.
No, that's typical. Thank you.
But they they really just wanted to bring attention to the state that that's an, what they felt was an unfair law.
Right.
It didn't make a difference to, cause they just settled and that was it.
So uh we have to, what, authorize me to sign this, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the settlement agreement for the uh Normington lawsuit.
Second motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm ridiculous, we had to pay anything.
Yeah, I know.
I've made my piece with it.
Okay, we've got a TA report?
So some of this we've already discussed, so I will keep it brief. Uh, in terms of the budget update, the um the piece that you heard, the finance committee will meet again on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, to start their recommendation process to include the warrant. And this is in anticipation of a vote on the budget. It's currently scheduled April twenty-ninth, so this is your recommended, recommendation to town meeting. Town Center Project, so we're happy to report that the MPO uh is currently taking public comments on a tip schedule that has the Town Center Project in twenty twenty-three. We discussed that it potentially could be on an amendment for twenty twenty-four. Uh, it looks like twenty twenty-three is gonna happen. It's not final yet, but uh it's a good sign. So we're gonna be able to put a coming soon sign, Town Center Project twenty twenty-three.
Or earlier, in the event that something falls out of bed somewhere else, and not gonna stop stating that every single time we talk about this. And one good thing I'll add to it, so I don't have to go over a committee update later, we uh recently received um, you know, the Town Center Committee's been active for three and a half years now, which is just a riot, but um we've we've recently received our first comments uh from the state on details. So we finally have details we can, you know, about landscaping and other things like that. So they gave us a bunch of um comments to our engineer, who who then sent it to us for sort of review, so I sent that to the Town Center Committee um so that they could sort of chime in with whatever their thoughts are. The details such as, okay, the sidewalk that's that's gonna go in between um the rec field and Route sixty-eight, um should that have trees in it to break up the um uh the sun on a hot summer's day, to get some shade, stuff like that. So anyway, it's at least nice to talk about some details, um and and that's it.
This, it's gonna happen, and it's gonna be soon. The exhaust mitigation system, so remember I gave you an update on this procurement that the uh the procurement fell through and we canceled the contract.
Yep.
So we'll be working to resubmit that invitation for bid uh sometime early May.
Okay.
And we wanna protect our firefighters. Our monthly reports, both are available, uh the all department report, so if you go to reports and information on the homepage, I'll just bring up the last all board report. So this is a way for residents to see uh everything that their elected officials and volunteer boards are doing, so this just going through it here, talks about our special events, our quarter of health, our planning board, board of selectmen, ag com, finance committee, cultural council. Are currently participating every other month. Uh, it's just a way for residents to stay informed and also for peer boards to understand how all of their pieces fit into the bigger puzzle.
Yep, no, it's great.
Okay, next up, uh bridge grant updates. So we have three bridges um currently scheduled to receive their funding this year. Uh, two small bridges, one over Williamsville Road, Natty Brook Pond, and one on Ragged Hill Road over Temple Brook. That construction is gonna begin in July with the project completing by November. Traffic will continue on these roads, but it'll be limited to one lane. Um, and we talked with the contractor about safety, et cetera, and what that's gonna look like.
Who's the contractor?
I knew you were gonna ask that. I can't remember if it stopped my head. I will get you that as well. And then Evergreen Bridge, uh worked with council as close to today to make sure that we're doing our right-of-way and our easements uh to complete that project with mass dot. So that project will probably go out to bid in the fall, under current schedule, so Evergreen Bridge Road, that's a much bigger bridge, and gonna be a beautiful final project, all funded by the state. Library construction, as most people are aware, construction has begun. Um, it is.
Can't miss it.
It is inhibiting town hall parking a little bit, but for a good reason, and everyone's really excited to to see it it moving forward. Uh, this was approved at town meeting last year. It was a result of of the hard work of the library trustees and and just the public in general getting behind this. It's gonna restore the slate tiles. Um, and we're getting tons of comments on social media and in person, just about how excited people are to see the finished product.
Tom, you guys doing like uh weekly or bi-weekly meetings, project meetings sort of things?
We have the surveillance activity of the architect.
Yeah.
An occasional email if there's something to discuss.
Yeah.
Uh, and Gary Genghis is volunteer that makes the movies, uh I call them movies, I guess I should call them videos, and uh.
Slideshows, still gonna put together.
He he was up there today, in fact, got four or five minutes of video, and we'll post him on the library, we'll post him on the historical commission, and somewhere else.
Cable will be posting on.
Cable.
Was he in the lift?
No, 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 it was a set of stairs.
Okay. Okay.
Nobody's writing the law.
Need a drone with a camera.
I mean, it's a brand.
He is going to be doing that as well.
What?
A drone.
Oh, cool. So in vacancies, we've had several important vacancies, just wanna update the board. So we'll be advertising and hiring for town clerk, library director, assessing assistant, and veteran service officer. So the VSO position is already advertised. We have several candidates. Um, our current VSO Jared Sharp um got a job as the director of Vietnam Veterans of America in Montana, which is an excellent position and opportunity for him. Can't blame him for moving back to Mon- well, he can, from Montana, but the position is great.
That's where he's from.
Doesn't mean you wanna go back there. And the um, the candidates were getting really strong, so we expect to fill this in in mid-May.
Just to remind everybody, not in this room, but you know, town clerk, a few years ago, went from a um elected position to an appointed position, per the charter change, so for years that was an elected position, but that went away.
So the the town clerk position and the assessing assistant position, which we have both filled right now, so there's no lapse in service, will be advertised in late May. Uh, both vacancies will come July first, so we have plenty of time to fill those positions. Uh, and after speaking with the library trustees, we announced and and met Christine, or met again Barbara. She was appointed as the interim director for a period of no longer than two years, and they will plan to begin an extensive search sometime in the coming year.
Okay.
And then for recognition, like to thank Chief Parent and Sergeant Kuchar, so they worked on getting, uh, you might see them, there's one right there. Uh, new cameras for the slade building, so we can call, to cover per uh important counter areas um in this building across the way, and then some safety areas in the police department. So we got a very high bid on this, how much it would cost. They were able to secure them um for a fraction of the cost, and then they installed them on their own uh volunteerism, so they worked great. Some upcoming topics, uh the benchmarking discussion that we continue to talk about, quarter three finances, uh human resources continue to be a focus, and then that town meeting thing is coming up soon.
Okay, is the benchmarking meeting tentatively set?
May thirteenth.
Okay, Laurie, we got a couple wage authorizations? Got a phone ringing?
Do you hear it?
Yeah.
Okay, at least it wasn't man-like, I'm gonna go. Um, yes. So wage authorizations, one is Christine Barbera, that is for the interim library director. It's going to be nineteen hours a week, twenty hours a week, and it's just obviously for the time that she's in that position.
Twenty, twenty better have been at H one.
James Payson, DPW seasonal worker. He was employed by us last year, obviously it's summer seasonal, so he's coming back. I'm just looking for approval on that.
Are these waiver of notification, or are these just approvals from?
Waiver.
Waiver of notification, alright.
So I'll make a motion to waive the notification period for uh Christine Barbera and James Payson as presented.
Second motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And committee updates, uh Q E M P, I don't have one. I gave one last time, based on the fact that we're gonna be meeting like quarterly now and going through things, and I I think I already gave the Town Center Committee uh comment as well, or the update, and we talked about it a little bit further, so I'm good there. Uh, I don't have any matters that popped into my head here, not anticipated. Does anybody else have anything they wanna bring up?
Uh, yeah, just on my way in, I noticed the uh hole in the parking lot at the uh rec field. It's a good size hole with a barrel in it, and maybe they could put a, repair it or put a plate on it. At least put a plate on it till it's repaired.
Where is it?
Uh, right at the entrance when you first pull in, I believe it's a manhole cover, and there's a good three by three washout going into the manhole.
I did forget one thing.
Go ahead.
Um, the Hubbardson, uh keep Hubbardson beautiful day happened on Saturday.
Yes, right.
It was pouring rain, it was a miserable day, and people were still everywhere. You could tell by the orange shirts that they were giving out. Uh, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts were both uh helping and doing their part. I brought my daughter. She jumped right in to help with the can sorting. Um, just, just a great event. If you haven't gone to it, I don't, I don't think you can appreciate just how hard people work to to clean up the town, which is volunteerism. Um, I know I really appreciate it. I know that the town really appreciates the effort uh driven by Laura Foley and volunteers.
Excellent. Okay, um.
Should we send her a letter?
Sure.
Yeah. Law.
Yeah.
How are you?
And we'll get her to do it next year, too.
She already has a date.
She's pretty committed.
Okay. Yeah, I know she is. Um, alright, we have public press, uh question, answer, anything that you want? Yeah, I know she is, um, alright, we have public press, uh, question, answer, anything that you wanna bring up?
Nope.
No? Okay.
Adjourn, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at, uh, eight forty, forty, yeah, eight forty.
Second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.